This is the Nottingham Planning Board meeting Wednesday, May 27th, 2020. It is 7:04. Call this meeting to order. The Chair, myself, has found that the, due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor in result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to the Executive Order 202008, boards thereof are authorized to meet electronically. These are statements that I need to just bring to everybody's attention. There is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the same Governor's Emergency Order. The Nottingham Planning Board is utilizing Zoom for electronic meeting. All members of the committee have the ability to communicate during this meeting throughout this platform, and the public has access to listen and, if necessary, participate. So, to get this meeting started, we have two cases on the agenda. Before I do that, let's just do a roll call of members that are here, and I will do roll call voting as we go. And if you, before you speak, please just state your name so we know who's speaking at that time. Some people are on a phone, so I just want to make sure that we understand who's who. So I'll just run through and the members, and if you're here, just say, acknowledge you're here. Ed Veale?
Here.
Sue Mooney?
Here.
Ian McKinnon?
Present.
Joe Clough?
Present.
Gary Anderson?
Here.
Leanne Gast? Any other member? No alternates present? So let me get into the first case here, and it's case 19-011-SUB. It's an application from Jeffrey and Susan Perdis, or four lot subdivision on Ascenic Road. The property is located at Tax Map 58, Lot 7-1. And we are in a continuance of previous meetings. And the last time that we had met with this applicant, they had presented a couple of waivers and had since then withdrew those waivers and went ahead and did work necessary to avoid waivers. And those were to provide a hydrological study, because this is within the aquifer district, and the other is to provide an environmental assessment statement. Both of those have been submitted and received and reviewed by staff and the board. So we do appreciate the applicants for doing that. So I would like to open it up to the applicant and their engineer who provided the hydrological study, and just give us an update on that. Is there anyone here that can speak to that? Okay, maybe the applicant's engineer's not available, but...
Hello, I'm Dave McLean.
Okay.
I'm the hydrogeologist who worked with the Perdis.
Okay, great.
So I'm here, you know, Jeff contacted me today, and he explained that the letter was distributed to the board and that there was a couple of questions and asked that I participate in the meeting. So here I am.
Great, I appreciate it. Yeah, I'd like to first acknowledge that the conclusions, and I'm just reading from this, is that while the aquifer can't support or is not likely to support a community drinking source, that the residential development shown should not significantly impact water for, or the aquifer recharge. And it sounds like because of the soils and somewhat because of the low usage of the residential property as proposed. Could you maybe elaborate a little bit and just state what those, what the conclusions are for you?
Yeah, so, you know, what I did was, you know, researched the hydrogeology for the area based on the, on mapping that was done by USGS, looked at the plans that were provided by Jeff, looked at test pits that were done in the area. So, you know, the general conclusion that I get is that this is a pretty safe development for a, an aquifer area. And it seems to me that it meets, it ticks off all the boxes for the requirements of the protection district from my reading of it. The, the lot sizes are large, so, and it's sandy material, so there's not going to be really any problem with recharge. So in terms of the aquifer's usage as a, a water resource, it's a pretty small aquifer as they come, and it's, the mapping is kind of, it's, it's a bit equivocal, because there's really no test drilling that was done in the area. It was a small pocket that USGS, when they were mapping these areas, had, had looked at, and, you know, based on, on their interpretations of aerial photography and the like, and probably some gravel pits that are in the area that they identified it as a, a likely aquifer. But there's no actual data to suggest that it's a thick or regionally important aquifer There's some interesting information in there. It does show groundwater flow directions and the like. And, you know, my experience in doing these kinds of studies for other towns is that the development of the lots, or the subdivision of the lot and residential usage of the lot is, is probably good and safe usage, because, you know, there, there is, it's unlike a commercial lot, there's not going to be any extensive paving that would cause no limits to recharge. Unlike commercial units, there's not going to be any appreciable hazardous material From what I could see, it looks like all of these lots are going to be provided with individual septic systems. There are some situations where I see these kinds of projects and run into problems when you have a community septic system that could have large flows, and that could cause problems with nitrates, but I don't see that here. So, that, that's sort of a thumbnail of everything that's in, I'm just trying to relate everything and, and, you know, just give a thumbnail of what I put in the, in the letter.
Yeah, no, that's perfect, I appreciate it. I do want to just open it up to board members to see if there's any questions or comments of Mr. McLean.
Dirk, this is Susan. I just want to say that I'm grateful to the applicant for moving forward with this hydrologic study, because it explains that the aquifer is well-suited for this type of development without any adverse impacts. Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else with any questions? I do, it was a fairly comprehensive report, so appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, just wondering, I do see Mr. Franklin on, but I'm not sure if maybe he's not hearing us.
I hear fine.
Okay.
I know I'm old, but gee whiz, guys.
Excuse me.
Yeah. Not going to touch that one. Okay, well, I don't see any other questions or hear any other questions on, regarding the hydrological study, so, Mr. McLean, I appreciate your, your information in attending the meeting.
Okay.
You're, you're more than welcome to stick around, but I think we're going to probably move on to some other things.
Um, I can stay on, or Jeff, are you okay?
Jeff, you're muted.
Oh, muted?
There you go, you're on.
I'm unmuted now. I, I just want to thank Dave.
Okay, great. Um, you know, you can let me know if there are any questions that come up during this thing and, you know, during the balance of the meeting, and I'd be happy to, to chime in at a later time, but...
I appreciate it, and I, I'm, I'm going to close the questioning for the board, so right now is their opportunity. I'll give it another count of three, two, one. Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. Bye-bye now.
Thanks, Dave.
You bet.
So then, the other study that was provided was the environmental statement. I think that was fairly comprehensive as well. That was provided by GOV Environmental. And Mr. Perdis, is there anyone from GOV that was going to speak to this, or if not, that's fine, we just wanted to, if there's any questions from the, the board, or any comments?
We didn't have a chance to reach out to them today, so it's going to be nobody in for discussion.
That's okay, we're just, yeah, I mean, it was fairly comprehensive. So again, that, that's a report that was submitted. Just ask the board members if there are any questions or comments on it.
This is Ed Veale. I just appreciate both. I understand that, you know, originally there was some question as to why these had to be done, but, you know, it is an important step in our process for subdivisions, that we get this kind of data, and, and we, we vet them fully, so I do appreciate that the applicant had them, had these completed, and, and that we have this data available to us and other boards.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments to make, if I may. This is Susan. On behalf, on behalf of myself and the Conservation Commission, we do very much appreciate the scope of the environmental impact statement and the results that were found. We also appreciate the recommendations to the development made by the GOV group to preserve as much of the canopy as possible, particularly the oaks, because they provide mast and food for a large variety of wildlife. The blending turtles, even though they have not been noted on that property, they are noted all around your property, and they do travel quite a bit. Recent studies have shown that they can move, move around within their area quite a bit. Also, to maintain the buffer for wetlands in their natural vegetative state in a policy of no cut and no disturb.
Any other comments on the environmental assessment? I, I do think that some of those recommendations were great, and in fact, I think the application even had some of those methodologies already in place, or those practices in place, as far as keeping things outside of wetland buffers and, you know, vegetation, and, I mean, these are very large lots, you know, five plus acres, where the minimum is three. So there's a lot of land available to remain in a natural state. And so these will, according to the report, have a very minimal impact. Okay, let me go on to the...
I don't think they can hear me.
Oh, we can hear you, whoever that was. Okay. So we do have a plan submitted, we do have an application, we've gone through what was required, and we do have comments back. And Steph, I guess I just asked you to, because this has had multiple continuances, and waiting for some of this information, I see on your comments that there's really only one that's highlighted, and I just want to make sure that we're, that you, we have the latest.
Everything else...
Steph, Steph, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Can you hear now?
A little bit better. Can you try it again?
Yeah, so I apologize, that was my mistake, I forgot to un-highlight that.
Okay.
Everything else looks good to me.
All right, thank you. So I'd ask any other board member at this time if they have questions. Mr. Franklin's here for the applicant, and the applicants are here, if there are any further comments regarding the application. And then after that, I will open it up to the public. The public hearing is still open, so I just want to make sure that we, we cover all of that.
Mr. Chairman, Ed Veale, so I have two things. One is just a cleanup item for Mr. Franklin on what's listed in sheet two of two. Looks like there's an old, kind of like phantom proposed driveway that was eliminated with the shared driveway, but still showing. But then the bigger item of concern for me is having driven on this road a few times and passed the site, is the proposed driveway for what's proposed as Lot 7-1-1. You can see it on the contour plan, but the, that's right before the crest of a hill, and there's, and it, in the, in the site right there slopes up. So access, safety of access would concern me, especially where Poor Farm connects to Ledge Farm. I'd expect traffic to start increasing on this road, especially if Ledge Farm is paved as the town plans. So I don't know if there's a way to mitigate that, in a, in a way, to try to make that driveway safer. But right now, where it is, I would have a lot of concern with a vehicle trying to come out of there and turn left especially.
And you said the Lot 7-1-1?
Yeah, you can see it on, on sheet four, that has the topo. The topo on some of these plans is different than sheet four, but in a very short period of time on the road, it goes from 170 feet of elevation to 180 feet, so it's a 10-foot gain, and then it's a crest, so it drops off on the other side. And then you have the, the stream going just, just near there, so the other part would be the impact to the, within the buffer to put in the driveway.
Okay, so, yeah, Mr. Franklin, could you address that?
Yes, I'm not quite sure, not quite sure what you're asking.
Oh, sure. So the first one is just a cleanup item. On sheet two of two, there's a, like a proposed driveway that's, that was just left on before this was turned into a shared driveway. So that's a minor issue.
I'll, I'll share that so you can see. So let me know if you're able to see my screen.
Oh, yes, I see.
So...
Here by L4.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, so there's one proposed, two proposed driveways. It's, I think you have to just eliminate that driveway.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then the other access or driveway Mr. Veale was talking about is this one here.
Yeah, and Dirk, I don't know if you have the other plan with the shading on it that shows the two contour lines? Yeah, right here. So you can see that the 170-foot and 180-foot lines, I think that's 180, are, are right close together, so that, that's right where the road crests into a hill. And that, that spot there, the topography goes up significantly from where the driveway's proposed. I don't know if there's a way to mitigate that access or mitigate the safety issue there. And then concern number two is that that proposed driveway would go through the, the wetland buffer, which is, is not generally allowed.
Well, I guess I would say, my, my take on it is, is that if it's not here, then it would be somewhere else that then they would have to cross the wetland.
Right, but I don't know if any of the, the board has had a chance to drive by here. It's, again, I mean, the road crests right there, so it's not just like it's going uphill, it crests, it goes, so you're, you're approaching the, the peak of the hill, and then it drops on the other side, so sightline is, is going to be very minimal. And you have other developments that come onto this road that would potentially be using this road as a cut over to get to Ledge Farm and into Epping, which we've seen increased traffic counts already.
Yeah, I, I live on the road, I'm not a direct of butter, so I can still talk to this application. Yeah, I mean, the speeds are fairly slow, you know, it's a, it's a gravel roadway. Yeah, I, I'd rather have it at the crest than halfway or partway down the hill, just so there is some visibility for the person pulling out of the driveway, so that they can at least see what's coming. But yeah, the whole road has a lot of those vertical sightline issues. So I don't, I don't know, I guess I'd ask the applicant's engineer, as far as that cut goes through that area, what, what was planned for the grading of that driveway?
I did not have a proposed grading. I did not work that up for that site.
Okay.
We could certainly do that.
I mean, I think this plan, this, this shows it clearly, you know, you've got that 10-foot change and a very, very short run on the road, and then the site, you've got that, I don't know if that's another 10-foot elevation change that's in the middle there of 180. So it would, sightlines would just be really difficult for that driveway. And I understand that right now, it's, it's gravel, it's slow, but you have a major subdivision that comes onto this road, has two access points onto it. Ledge Farm, they've already seen the traffic counts double, and they're planning on paving the majority of it, so I would expect that we'd continue to see traffic cutting through But even without that, even without that increased traffic, that would be a concern of mine, is where that driveway is currently proposed for the two reasons. It goes through the wetland buffer, so you're going to be disturbing the soils within a setback, and then the second reason is the, just the, the safety of access for anybody coming out of there.
Okay.
And maybe like Dirk said, maybe you can shift it and, and grade in such a way that it gets closer to the peak and, and can make it a better sightline.
We can look, Mr. Chairman, is that something that the road agent would work with the land owner to obtain the best sight line location? Or is that something that's strictly up to us and the planning board?
Well, it's typically up to the planning board and, and the applicant to come up with these driveway locations as best possible. Now, obviously, we understand that, you know, there isn't the designed home yet. There are some other factors that may adjust this. So, that being said, it has not been something that the Public Works has entertained in providing any information, but we can certainly ask them. I mean, we did request any comments from all, all of the staff, including the road department, and we didn't get anything back, and I'll ask Steph or Joanna, did we receive any information, any comments from the road agent? No?
No, none at this time.
Mr. Chairman, this is Susan. I have a comment to make about the driveway. I'm looking at the sheet two of two that, that you have been talking about, and the proposed driveway, it, it looks, if you, if you move it slightly to the left orientation that I'm looking at, that might be a little bit better, but if you come in instead from the right-hand end where that double stone wall is, you can skirt most of the elevation problems and the wetland buffer as well. It's a longer driveway proposal, but it would take care of some of those issues. Thank you.
So you would mean, you were thinking to have it over onto the adjacent lot, like a, a shared driveway or an easement?
Um, no, not, not on the parent lot, but if, as you look at Lot 7-1-1, where it, it's on Poor Farm, if you looked at the stone wall, it goes right across the front, and then there's a double stone wall that's parallel to that, if you start the driveway near that double stone wall closer to the parent lot, then you don't have any wetlands to deal with or the steep slopes that are in yellow. I'm looking at the map online here.
Yeah, they, they would have to cross over that wetland, I would think, to get to the developable site, outside.
See, I don't have on this one. Okay.
Yeah, they would have to cross through Wetlands Impact.
Mr. Chairman, Ian McKinnon, my only comment kind of goes to Mr. Veale's comment, is I see that they do have the shared, the proposed common driveway between 7-1-2 and 7-1-3. I know the old plan did have, 7-1-3 did have its own driveway. You could, to Mr. Veale's point, that driveway for 7-1-1 could move to a better location, I guess, with a common driveway between that lot and 7-1-2. So it's kind of a flip-flop of the common driveways, but it seems like it would potentially get the driveway to a location that has better visibility. Still going through an area where some steep slopes, but that's up to the applicant.
And that's Mr. Veale, again, I think that makes sense, having driven this road now, like the curve that is showing to the, near 7-1-3, on paper, it looks more severe than it is, but when you drive the road, the sightline there is so much better than further down the road. So I think the applicant originally had had an individual driveway going in to... So I think the applicant originally had had an individual driveway going into seven dash one dash three. And I think that could be potentially be the the fix to this is that seven one two and seven one one switch over to a shared driveway and seven one three gets its own again. Again, it's a lot different on paper than when you actually go by there and 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 see it. There's a long driveway already, just just near there.
So I just shared it on the screen again. You're you're saying not do this shared driveway?
Correct. When you so originally, I believe seven one three had its own driveway. But because it's near kind of a double curve, we proposed moving that over to we recommended switching that to a shared driveway. But having gone by there, I think that one would make more sense to have its own driveway and the other two share a driveway based on the topography, the stream and everything.
Yeah, but the only place would be between these two wetlands and this buffer.
And to that to that point, Dirk, if you scroll up to the proposed driveway that we're saying is a concern now, it actually would impact the buffer potentially more. You can actually see it. Looks like it almost gets within 10, 15 feet of a corner of the wetland right about there. So I mean, I guess it's my thought is right around where you see the designation of line 12, L 12 up on Park Poor Farm Road. It seems like you could get the common driveway between these two lots. That is right about the high point, but again, it kind of leaves more flexibility to keep that driveway. Yep, exactly. Keeps it out of the buffer area, so. You know, obviously, I wasn't around when this application started, but I think Ed's points valid that maybe switching these, flip flopping this maybe is the best solution based on the road topography.
So Mr. Franklin, would you would you have concerns with that or?
Oh, that definitely can say I'd suggest even if we move it further towards L, the line where it's L 13.
Even better.
Yeah, and and move it closer towards L 13. Come in at right angles.
Yep.
And then go back and then eliminate what we show as a common driveway for seven one two and seven one three now. Eliminate that. And then have lot seven one three have its own driveway in the vicinity of that line L four.
Mr. Franklin, the area that's clear now, because I know there was some some cutting that had gone on, is that more on contained on 713 or 712?
I'm sorry, say again?
I'm sorry, it's Ed Veal. So the area that there's kind of like a staging area for like where some logging had been done. So there's a clear access to the to the property now, is that? Do you know where that is kind of on these plans?
Yeah, I think it's this gate that's down here at L four.
Yeah, so so that area is kind of already clean cleared, and you can actually skirt right between the two 50 foot setbacks if we put a driveway back in there. And and again, I think this is what Mr. Franklin had originally proposed, but.
Very similar.
So again, it's a lot different when you go by a site on on flood, and that's why we do sidewalks a lot of times, but I've driven by a few enough times in different weather to see that how it performs, and I'd feel better with this. And be able to shift that other driveway to a common shared driveway to eliminate that that access issue and that that I think would be the best option for the applicant.
Okay, is there any opposition to that?
If I may, is
Yeah.
Is Jeff still here on on he's still signed in? Jeff Paradas?
I'm here.
Okay, Joe, is that is that that L four for this is on lot seven one three? Is that where the the landing area is for the logging?
Yes. Yep.
And any objection to eliminating that common driveway that we show for lot seven one three and seven one two? And then putting in a common driveway for seven one one and seven one two?
Well, I'll be I'm not a big fan on common driveways and not a lot of people aren't fans on common drives, they just create problems. I don't see a problem moving that driveway. I can't even see the map there on the the bigger lot. Moving that driveway towards that stone wall like Sue was saying. Closer to was that L 12? And that could give you enough sight up and down that road. And have that an individual drive, have three individual drivers would be would be ideal versus common driveways. Common driveways, to me, just create problems. They with landowners and so on and so forth like that. So if I can avoid a common driveway, that'd be the best thing for everybody involved. I understand what we're trying to do here. But I don't see a reason why that that driveway can't slide down towards that stone wall and slip right in there that 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 slope is not that great. Right there, I think would be the easy fix right there. And do away somehow do with those other two common driveways. That just creates, to me, that creates a problem with landowners, homeowners, who plows it? I hear, I mean, I'm in this trade all day long, and that's the the one big thing I hear with common driveways is always a dispute. I wouldn't want a common driveway in my my lot, and I don't think anybody would want a common driveway and have to deal with it.
This is Susan. Number one, I just want to thank Ed for his diligence on this, and I tend to agree after looking at the maps that the possibility of doing a single driveway for seven dash one dash three and then doing a common driveway for seven dash one dash two and seven dash one dash one makes more sense than what's presented. And my second comment is is mostly to you, Jeff, that although shared driveways are not all that popular, sometimes they are done with respect to physical features like wetlands and steep slopes. So this might be one of those times where we just kind of give in to the topography. Thank you.
So what?
I would I agree, I would agree, but I want to explore all options before I I'd like to explore all the options before I sign off on a common driveway. I just it just common driveway, common driveways, I mean, I I guess I I don't understand, we have we increased our lots to to do this, we don't put in a bunch of three acre lots in there. So we're trying to, we increased our lots to so we didn't have such an impact on the road in there and just to put to move the driveways around it, I want to explore it a little bit more than than just saying, oh, yeah, we can do this, we can do that. I think it's just feasible to explore it.
Okay, so let me ask a question then. I mean, is there enough frontage here that this, the actual lot line could be could encompass this driveway? And then, you know, this this one becomes a single driveway, so they all have single driveways?
That would be up.
Lot seven one two has about 245 feet of frontage.
Seven one two, so minimum is 200, correct?
Yes, so we we could move, we could reduce the frontage for lot seven one two and increase the frontage for lot seven one one. And that way it would have its own driveway.
Yeah, so the lot line, you know, could do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Exactly, yes.
And then the driveway can, you know, get out of the steep area and then be able to, you know, get away from that wetland a little bit more. But yet still have enough, and there's plenty of buildable area, so you know, if this 50 foot reduction happens through here, then they all have their own lot, their own driveways.
Mr. Chair, Ian McKinnon, I would say I'm probably would say I've been supportive of that because even if, you know, where the current driveway is for seven one dash one is shown going through the designation L 16, even if we move that driveway up closer to what's now shown as the proposed line, because of the topography, I do suspect there would be a decent amount of cut required to get that driveway in there. So that additional lot area that you're giving to seven one dash one would would help alleviate some of that concern for any future impacts.
Yep.
Yes, that's Mr. Veal again, so I would say we have two ways of kind of exploring every option on this to try to make sure we find, come up with what's best for the town and for the applicant. One, we've talked about a sidewalk. I think for me, the biggest area of concern is really just, you know, where the roads are going, the driveways are going to go in. The second way of potentially accent dealing with that would be have the road agent go out with the you know, the applicant or the surveyor and just try to see where these are and and see which way we can get the get these in and mitigate it. To make sure we have the best sightlines possible and and everything else. So if we can end up with three driveways that that work out, you know, and and do everything that the applicant would like, I think that's great. But again, for me, the biggest concern is that is that that first proposed driveway.
Okay. But past the driveways, is there any other concerns besides the driveways?
This is Leanne Gass. I just have a quick question still about the driveway. Since this is a scenic road, when when the driveways are put in a lot seven one two and seven one three, with the stone wall pieces that are removed, able to be used sort of line the interior of the driveway on the way in, just to give it a more be consistent with the appearance on that road?
Yeah, I mean, if there are stone stones removed, we typically do like them to stay, you know, close to where they were. You know, if they have to open up for a driveway opening or something. And that's pretty typical along the scenic roads. And I mean, the the areas that these are buildable, you know, are set back quite a bit, that tree removal right up against the road isn't a big concern. But yes, we can, Leanne, to answer your question, yes, we can make that a condition that they reuse those stones. Okay, any other comments? So let me open the public hearing. Let's get to here if there is some some public here. Again, Steph, I might need some help here to say who how to how to do it, but if someone could just acknowledge whether it's by speech or by waving or by raising their hand or something. If you do have a question or comment about this application, now's the time to to do so. Okay, let me let me ask again if there's any comments to or for this application. This is the public hearing portion of the meeting. This is when public can speak for the application, against the application, or if they have general comments or questions. Okay, seeing none. So what I'd like to do is is I'd like to close the public hearing because we, you know, bring this back to the board really. If a sidewalk is is warranted or if a sidewalk is recommended, requested, then we have to allow public at that sidewalk. So I think that would be an extension of the public hearing process. So I'm more inclined to leaving the public hearing open. Steph, do you have any input on that? Guidance?
Um, sidewalks are still a hot topic in the planning world right now because of the public gathering stipulation. The only other thing I can think of is if we had, you know, a social distance sit down meeting with Mr. Franklin, myself and the road agent, Sean, and we could try and come up with some alternative layouts for the driveways. And then send them to the board for approval.
Yeah, I I think that that's probably the prudent thing to do, and I know, you know, sidewalks are are advantageous. But if we're talking about the driveways, then those are easily accessible for any board member to drive by them and and look at them. So we wouldn't necessarily need to access the property like a a normal sidewalk. So I would ask that, you know, Steph, if and Joanna, if you could let the road agent know and see if they could schedule that to, you know, within the next week or so to be able to go out there and look at those driveways and come back with or work with with Mr. Franklin and Mr. Paradas and come back with some recommendations, that would be great.
Chairman Ed Veal, I'm totally fine with that. I think that's a great compromise. And I think Mr. Franklin or Mr. Paradas can confirm that the the flagging is currently there, was last I went by. They showed where proposed driveway would be, the proposed lot line, so as long as that's still intact. I think anybody that wants to go by can get a good idea of of the site. And then it also if if Steph and the road agent can can meet with the applicant, I think that would that gives us the information we need, I think, at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Susan. I agree. Thank you very much.
Okay, so what I'd like to do, if that's the case, and we're down to whether the driveway driveway locations and just a couple of small plan notation conditions, I would like to close the public hearing. In that way, hopefully, we can get these driveways resolved, and then at our next meeting, we can take this up for a vote. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, we would just need probably two things. So if we're ready to continue at this point, just to confirm with the applicant what date works for them. They can set a date offline with with staff. And then the other thing, just make sure it's enough time for the applicant to get any revised plans that might come of this to us within you know, a week to go over review.
Yep. Yeah, I think the changes would be minor once they're determined. So Mr. Franklin or Mr. Paradas, is there a a date specific, you know, we meet every two weeks? You know, if if we can get this stuff kind of wrapped up within the next week and then have this, you know, it's not a lot of information, but if we can have it a couple of days before our next meeting, that would be enough time to get it to board members for a meeting in two weeks, or the alternative would be in four weeks.
Excuse me, a date certain, is that the 10th, June 10th?
Yeah. That's at the 24th.
Pardon?
June 10th or June 24th?
I think June 10th would be fine.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to continue this until June 10th at seven o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, this is Susan. I moved that we continue case number 19 011 SUB to June 10th, 7:00 PM.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and a motion then, a second by Gary.
Is that a date for deliverables or are we okay with? You know? You know.
Um, let me see, so.
Like I said, they're minors, I think, I think we're fine as long as we get them within normally at the week, but. Yeah, I'd be fine with this, you know, three days at a time.
Yeah, let's do that, within three days of the meeting. Whatever date that was. Seventh.
Seventh.
Okay.
It's it's a Sunday. Like either.
How about the eighth?
Fifth or the eighth, either one.
How about the eighth?
Eighth is fine. He's fine by me.
Okay. So let let me just uh, so there's a motion in a second. And uh, I guess let me just do a roll call. Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ed Veil?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Leanne Gass?
She's not voting.
Yeah, you're not missing any voting, remember.
Oh. Okay, Joe Clough? Okay, so that's uh.
Mooney, don't forget Sue Mooney.
Sue Mooney, I don't see your face, all I see is your name, sorry.
Yeah, I have a phone, okay, my I vote yes.
All right, so that's unanimous, so we'll continue this um. And then and then we can get this wrapped up.
Very good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Paradise and Mr. Franklin.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Over and out.
Yep, let let me. Lot of paper shuffling while I was talking, so now I lost everything. Paying attention. Somebody read off the next. Case.
Case, we have case two zero dash one zero one one dash S U B, application for Beals associate associates for a five lot subdivision. Property owned by Laurel Miller is located on Mill Pond Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, is identified as twenty four lot forty one dash zero zero two. And this is a continuation as well.
Okay, so the continuation, the application was. Uh, accepted, and we're in a continuance. And let's see what the. And this continuance was uh, to get on the. Zoning, the Z B A relative to hydrological study requirement. They did receive a variance. From the Z B A on May nine, May nineteenth. So. One will not be submitted for this application. And I guess Steph, could you go through the um, most recent changes and updates for me?
Um, I just have one comment, I just want to double check, was the application actually accepted at the last meeting this was heard at?
Yes. It it was accepted. Yeah, I did notice, I did notice on that 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 checkbox wasn't on there, but I went back to the February twelfth. Meeting uh, in the minutes, it's indicating that it was accepted.
Okay, my apology then for missing that.
No.
Um. There aren't any major changes since. That last meeting, uh, the applicant did provide a letter addressing the comments in my technical comment section. Everything seems to be in order.
Okay.
Just to ease point of order, just want to make sure we have the right information here on the um. The notice of decision for the Z B A. It's got a different applicant name, is that? We're all, it was case uh. It says Lightning Construction is LLC. Does that matter?
Yes, that's that's the same application.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so I I guess maybe um. If the applicant or uh. Representative, Mr. Smith, maybe maybe you could just catch us back up to speed on the application. Uh, and what's happened since we last saw this, it looks like. There hasn't been a lot of uh, plan changes, uh, but now that the Z B A has ruled the variants. Maybe just a quick summary would be appreciated.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good to see you, well, aside from the global pandemic, there have been a few changes to the application, uh, we did some minor. Additions, uh, we added the uh, soil conservation service soils to the plan, um, the surveyor has added proposed monumentation. And a few other things based on um. Steph's initial comment letter, which we did uh, write a a formal reply to. As you mentioned, on the nineteenth, we did receive a variance from the zoning board uh, for the hydrogeologic study. And essentially. One minor change, and Mr. Chairman, might be helpful if I uh, shared my screen so that I could just quickly point this out.
Yeah, please do.
Thank you, um, so there was one comment from, uh, actually came up from the planning board at the last hearing. And that was uh, the measuring of the buildable areas or the buildable buildable envelopes. Uh, where it is fifty greater, so we have added that. And it did modify, I believe, lots, three, four, and five very slightly. Um, to get that squared away, uh, but in addition to that. Those are all compliant now, and uh, we did add the note based on Steph's commentary that. Uh, the driveway to serve lot three shall not encroach into or cause disturbance within the building setback to the wetland. Uh, we have updated the uh, the wetland, the two wetland features. With the actual wetland designation from the Soil Scientist Report. Uh, as well as labeled them both uh, as poorly drained, because that, there was some question. Was there very poorly drained soils within those features, um, and and there is not. And then the final uh, thing, I guess, is the uh, existing well, there was commentary from the board, they would like to see. A note that these both don't stay, so we've added a note that that existing well, the secondary well. Will be uh, decommissioned per um, N H D E S standards. And the final piece of the puzzle, I believe, is we have also added. A waiver for a formal drainage analysis, which I think you folks have either downloaded or um. Or at least able to are able to see on the uh. On the upload from Joanna on the website. Um, by and large, that is, that is the majority of of any substantial changes. And uh, I would certainly be able to uh, answer any questions or um. You know, any concerns that the board may have at this point.
Okay, thank you, uh, I'll bring it back to the board then, if uh, if there are some questions on this application.
Mr. Veal, uh, Mr. Chairman Ed Veal, I had a couple of questions that Mr. Smith touched on, one, and I just wanted to check on. For proposed lot three, he answered that question about the uh. The area of impingement that that's been taken out of the building envelope calculation, but proposal five. That lower section, is that still included in the uh? Like, is it just the upper rectangle that's included in the um, the building envelope? Or is it that lower section as well?
No, you're you're correct, that that is just the uh, the upper envelope calculated from where we scribe the fifty foot line. Uh, and and above that, none of that, none of that additional area is counted.
This is Susan, I don't have a visual, um, could you tell me what the acreage is now with lot five?
And Mrs. Mooney, are you talking about the building envelope acreage?
Yes, please.
Yes, it's thirty four thousand four hundred and ninety one square feet.
Okay, very good, thank you, Christian.
You're very welcome.
I I do see that line now, Mr. Mr. Smith, appreciate that, um, for lot five, though, the four K area is not being shown within that thirty fourth, that thirty thousand square foot area?
That's correct.
And it has to be um, based on the definition of a building envelope. And then the current lot, the four K area that's shown there, is that where the septic system is, or uh, just showing that there could be one?
I think we. Uh, that no, the existing septic system, as far as we're aware, is uh, perfectly functional. That is simply for uh, Department of Environmental Services subsurface, when we apply for the subdivision permit, they will need to see a replacement.
Do we know where the the current septic system is?
Uh, not precisely. The surveyor was not able to uh, to find that, but there have been no issues or uh. That the homeowner's been able to cite, nor areas where you would see, you know, uh, very wet ground that would indicate there's a a failure somewhere.
Right, but how do we know we're not putting a lot line over a septic system or or?
Oh, I see where you're saying, well, the the indication from the homeowner is that it is, oh, you can't see my uh. It is somewhere um. In the area of test pit eight toward. The approximate aquifer protection zone. But that that's just, that's just testimony. And the the point being, I guess, Mr. Vale, is that if it does have to be replaced at some point in time. It will go in either the location shown over test pit eight or uh. You know, up by test pit seven.
And. Stepping back to lot five, uh, one more time, sorry, there's a um, there's two lines. One is, I believe, a seventy five foot setback. Let me go back up to it.
Yeah, that's the septic setback.
So is that? Is that area between the seventy five foot and the fifty foot line, is that included in the current building envelope calculation?
Yes. Because a building could go there, but a septic system could not.
Right, but the the definition of a lot envelope for us is that um, the thirty thousand square foot contiguous area. Shall not include, uh, there is unfit for building and their appropriate setbacks or building setbacks. So I don't know. That's um, I think we should discuss as a board, whether or not that area is technically considered buildable or not.
Ed, on the on the screen, are you referring to the the lower leg of lot five here?
Uh, yeah, the screen's not being shared.
Oh. Let me share it.
That no, so that lower leg, that uh, Mr. Smith already clarified that that section's not being counted in that building envelope now.
Yeah.
If you scroll. Or down, whichever way you want to count that, there's that area right at the top of the building envelope. There's the fifty foot wetland setback, and then also a seventy five foot. Septic setback. So the area in between the fifty and the seventy five currently is being calculated as part of the building envelope. I don't think that area is more than four thousand square feet, so I think they're fine, but.
Okay.
And I guess, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh, I I would just interject that, I mean, the the assumption being is that. That is buildable, because you you could actually put a building within that twenty five feet, just not the septic system, so I don't know how it could be construed that that wouldn't be countable. Because it's it's clearly a viable building. Just not for a septic system.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Ian McKinnon, to Ed's point, I guess, in reference, uh, the previous case that we just discussed, they did not include the seventy five to fifty foot, so I'm not sure if that's something that we need to. Be a hundred percent on from our end.
Okay, so you're referring to the the this seventy five foot. The area, the area in the seventy five foot was calculated in their building?
Uh, on the previous application we just discussed in this meeting, they excluded, they used the seventy five foot as their limit of buildable. Envelope. There is a. Just for consistency, we might need to just confirm. Based on our definitions.
Okay.
But yeah, for me, it just kind of goes back to the the definition, that when we read the end of the definition of a lot envelope, and then areas unfit for building. And it's a um. The sticky point, but like I said, it might be moot if that area is less than four thousand square feet. But one thing we would need to see, though, is the four K area up there.
It will have an impact on lot three. Depending on that definition. Because we're only about eleven hundred square feet over. Most likely it will, anyway.
Yeah, we'll have to get a clarification for that. Ed, do you have that? That regulation open, I don't have it.
It's it's more just in the definition. When you get down to the definition of the zonings, uh, ordinance for a lot envelope, and then. Uh, you want to also reference unfit for building.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add one clarifying point to Mr. McKinnon's point on the seventy five and the fifty foot setbacks?
Please.
So, um, Mr. Franklin, in the last. Application, he def- he deferred to that seventy five foot. Um, setback, because they had the ability to do so with those large lots. Um, in this case, the fifty foot is where that top. Section on lot five, that line, that's that's the fifty foot setback, it that, it's not labeled, but I'm assuming that's what it is. Um, and you can build up to that line, you just can't put a septic system up to that line, the septic system has to be outside the seventy five foot. Um, so I, this is just a different way of showing it.
Understood, and to Ed's point too, I am uh, reading. Just refreshing myself on the unfit for building definition, it does say. Um, you know, where soil tests indicate unsuitability for subsurface waste disposal, so. Whether you just the clarification on the limitation of the soil tests versus the setback for the subsurface.
So there could be a building, I mean, the house could be within that. Seventy five feet.
Yes.
Yeah.
Ed, do you want to follow up on that, or? How how do you want to? Proceed?
So I don't know, I just thought it was something we should figure out. Uh, as a board, because we, we basically have to reference the the several. Definitions, the lot envelope, fit for building, unfit for building, and then also the the uh, because for me, it's the um. It's it's a kind of a gray area. But if it's if it's a protected area for a septic, septic, is it also, does it not count towards the building envelope? Or not?
And I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'll just reiterate, I I feel that if. A structure could be placed there, it has to be counted as a building. I don't know how it could be construed to be different.
Yeah, if we, if we specifically state it within the buildable area. That. You know, it's it's seventy five feet away from a wetland. Which ours doesn't.
No, only for very poorly drained soils, that's correct.
Then I I tend to agree that, I mean, this is a buildable area, just not for septic. Because of the wetland. Because of the wetland. I mean, it it it's a buffer zone, 75 feet.
Mr. Chairman, I'd probably agree with that, just based off of the last sentence in our definition of lot envelope, that the lot envelope shall not include either areas unfit for building and their appropriate setbacks or building setbacks. And then, so that's when we get into the unfit area for building. And under that definition, any land which is classified as a floodplain, wetland, watershed protection area, excessive slope, 25% or more, drainage ways, or where soil tests indicate unsuitability for subsurface waste disposal. So it doesn't doesn't reference any sort of setback for the system. So then I would see my case with the unsuitability tests, but.
Right, I I it's hard to get it, you know, defined by three different locations, but something we'll need to clear up a little bit more in our zoning regulations.
And I'm fine with that, just pending it for later for board review. And then just going back to the very last piece again, was that 4K area? Our definition and zoning, not definition, but the it basically says where the 30,000 square foot area should shall be where a house can be seeded and then also where, you know, septic can occur. But I don't think there's any test pits up in this area that were done. In that area.
No, that's correct. But I have I have no doubt that the septic system would, you know, be viable. Soils don't change that vastly.
So I guess by our buildable area, I mean, do you have to have the house in the buildable area? Is that what we defined it? Because, you know, this isn't defined as the building envelope, but it's within the setbacks.
Right, and I feel that that a house could certainly be built up there. I think the the reason for the building envelope is just to demonstrate that you have that 30,000 square feet plus of up contiguous upland area that is devoid of setbacks, et cetera.
Right.
Our definition of building envelope only refers to the placement of dwelling units.
What I was referring to is zoning ordinance. C2, I'm sorry, C1C, where it talks about each lot must contain the 30,000 square foot contiguous area lot envelope in which a house and septic system shall be placed meet all existing setback ordinance consisting of upland soils.
Okay, so it sounds like they shall be placed there, which means you need to place them. So I guess you'd have to prove that there's septic capability up here to get that lot to be a viable lot.
So that that would mean just an additional test pit up in that location.
Yes. Okay, and then what we just went over quite a bit with the last applicant is driveways and driveway locations. And your plan doesn't show any of those driveway locations. Is that something you can provide?
We certainly can, but I will point out to to the chair and the members of the board that the site distance on all of these lots, obviously, the existing driveway would would remain. And where the driveway for lot three would be is almost perfectly situated on the outside of the horizontal curve, which is a good thing. And that's a very not too steep section of road there. And similarly, on the other side, all three of those lots have perfectly fine site distances. But if that's if that's something that the board wants us to put in as a potential driveway area for the four new lots, I'm happy to do that, no question.
Yeah, I I think that is is very helpful, because that way we can we can see where they're going to access and then also, you know, tree cutting or or anything along those roadways, although this is not a scenic road. But we do want to make sure our town character is is still met.
Sure.
And that you're not going to put a driveway right over the culvert.
Right.
No.
We would not do that.
I know you wouldn't. Any other comments with the board?
I have none, this is Susan.
All right, well, as a part of this process, we would do want to have a public hearing. So this is the time where I'll open the public hearing. And anybody who wants to, again, make a comment, please either raise your hand, wave, do something audible, there isn't a lot of people here, so just speak up if you do want to have any comment.
Mr. Chairman, we have a hand raised from Karen Rossi.
Okay, could you unmute her?
Ms. Rossi, you're unmuted.
Hi, Karen Rossi, I'm in a butter, I'm not a direct to butter, I lived down the street. I'd like to speak in favor of this application. I think it's a well planned plan. I think it would definitely enhance the neighborhood and it'd be welcome to get that old property cleaned up, be a very nice asset to the neighborhood.
Great, thank you very much. Any other public comments? Two or four or against? I'll give it the same three, two, one. Not hearing any or seeing any other hands raised. I'm I'm inclined to close the public hearing and work out some of these other details with for the submission. Any comments from the board? So I guess this would mean we'd continue the application until the next meeting.
Excuse me, point order, I'm sorry. Would it be possible for you to please leave the public portion open until you resolve the outstanding issues on that other remaining lot?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's the was a request to leave the public hearing open, there's no requirement to, but we will leave it open because we will have a continued meeting.
Thank you.
There's a hand up from Mr. Langdon.
Yes, I have a question. I'm not sure what why there is a question about the buildable area on lot five dash one. That is a contiguous piece of land that travels upland. The house can be put in the front portion of the land, and I'm I'm just confused why that's in question.
So we have a definition of a buildable area.
Right.
And that buildable area has to contain the house and the septic system.
And I'm confused why the lower part of that lot can't do that.
Because it doesn't meet the, there needs to be 30,000 square feet of contiguous area to support that.
Right, but that continues through the backland that is connected and contiguous.
It it is, but we only count it to a fifth, a minimum of 50 feet wide.
So there's 50 foot setbacks inside and then another 50 feet? So unless you have 150 foot wide, it's not considered contiguous.
No, it it just needs to be 50 feet wide. Between the lot lines, there has to be 150 feet, yes.
Okay, so that's that's what I was asking, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Avoid arid glass shape lots and odd shaped lots and things like that.
Well, yeah, I mean, 50 foot setbacks are quite astronomical already, so, yeah. Okay, thank you, I just wanted that definition.
Sure.
Somebody want to remind me where I left off? So we're going to keep the public hearing open. We're going to, I'd like to get a motion for a continuance. And I'd leave it up to Mr. Smith. Yes, go ahead, Christian.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I was just curious if we could, at least before continuing the the project, could we get the board to contemplate and perhaps act on the the waiver? And the the only reason I ask is if if we're going to have to go out and do another test pit, you know, and the waiver does not get approved, then we would we would want to be doing that study at the same time.
Sure, yeah, we can act on this waiver. Yeah, I think that's prudent to do. And I'd almost liken this to even the previous application, while it's a major subdivision application, the lots are fairly large. And usually what what the board likes to see for drainage on major major subdivision is having a full analysis completed. And these standard, single unit, single driveway lots subdivision that are on existing roads that have no road development inside, in my opinion, are typically not. The drainage there, drainage analysis is not necessarily warranted at all. That's my opinion. And that is what the waiver was requesting. Yes, Mr. Smith?
And just to that end, Mr. Chairman, in addition to that, in this iteration of the plans, we have also specified that the roof eaves will or the roofs will drain off the eaves or by gutter into drip edges, which are basically just, you know, washed stone trenches for infiltration. And the driveways, one side or the other, whichever way they'll be super elevated, will have the bio retention or dry swells alongside those for additional treatment of the of the driveway pavement as well.
Okay.
Those details are on the site plan also, or have been added.
Yep, we saw, I saw those. So if the board is comfortable with the waiver as written, I guess I'd entertain a motion either to approve or deny the waiver.
Mr. Chairman, I'd I'd move to approve the the waiver for case number 2000 dash sub for formal drainage analysis.
Yep, it's Article 10, Section 10.3.
Article 10, Section 10.3.
Okay, I think Sue chimed in, so I'll give the second to Sue. Any other discussion about the waiver? Okay, I'll roll call. Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ed Veal?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Joe Clough? Sue Mooney?
Yes.
And Dirk's, yes, so that's unanimous on the waiver, so. That's that's accepted.
Mr. Chairman, before we act on a continuation, Joanna, can you just tell us what we have coming up for June 10th and June 24th?
Potentially, you have the Mitchell Road case on June 10th. Possibly staff confirmed a conceptual, possibly. Okay, and June 24th at this time is open.
Okay, and June 10th, we do have the continuance of Paritas.
I'm sorry, yes, you're in.
And Mr. Smith or Mr. Langdon, any idea how long it would, what what you would need for time for the the test pits there to determine that 4K area?
About a day. That goes on the way right now.
Since Mr. Langdon owns his own equipment, it is it is a very quick process, Mr. Veal.
I I guess that the question then is, you know, could you get us this information and the driveways by sometime next week? For, and that would be for the June 10th. If that's doable, you're more than welcome to, we'll get you on that agenda. If you'd like the to to the 24th, then that's available as well. I'll leave that up to you guys.
I I think personally, and Paul, you can you can certainly shut me down if you think I'm wrong, but based on the fact that we're just adding proposed driveway entrances and the waiver has been approved, getting your plans back next week will not be a problem.
Okay, I'll make it happen, I know the landowner would like to see it sooner than later, so.
Okay, well, let's let's try and accommodate that. So let's let's make that continuance for June 10th.
Thank you.
I move that we continue case.
Mr. Chairman, one second, I just have one clarification, clarification. I think this started just before I came on board full time. Are you guys in the process of the state subdivision application?
We have not filed yet, no.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All set.
Go ahead, Ed.
I can move that we continue case 20001 dash S U B, the June 10th at 7:00 PM with deliverables a week ahead of time, June 3rd.
Okay, is it, there was a second by Ian?
Yep.
Any other discussion, roll call, Ian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Sue Mooney?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, so that's unanimous. So we'll see you guys on the the 10th.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Yep, thank you. That concludes the the public hearing and the public meeting cases that we have tonight. Thank you very much, everybody, for joining. Board members, I'll just quickly go around. Do we have some minutes to approve? Okay, so there are some minutes. Which dates are those, Joanna?
February 12th.
Stand up. Okay. Is everybody okay with the the minutes on the 12th?
I move that we accept the minutes of February 12, 2020, as amended.
A second?
I think Gary got in on that one. Any other discussion, no, roll call, Ian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Sue?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. And since I did bury my agenda somewhere, what's next? Are we gonna, is it just discussions?
Board members' update? Board members' update.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any updates. Other than these meetings are really fun. And I don't have to wear a tie or anything like that, nobody knows what I'm wearing. I actually got slippers on, you know, see?
Don't, don't, the toilet.
You must have the AC turned on real well.
I don't have AC here, this is.
The world has them upstairs, it's about 95 up here right now.
Oh, you're in the attic, oh, boy.
Pretty much.
Ian, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Gary?
Just, I was not able to make last week's meeting in Stratford, however, there was a kind of reach out about requests for needs having to do with COVID and emergency possible money. I mentioned just, you know, from my experience with fire department, a lot of extra time goes into. dealing with this unusual time period. And so I know there was also an approval by the selectman, from what I understand, for some added stipend costs for some of the emergency personnel. I just made that note to the board.
Thank you, Jerry.
Ed, any updates?
Nothing, sir.
Tyler?
At the select board meeting, you know, we spoke about several different things. 300th anniversary, the cookbook's almost ready. Austin property is coming along good. Tax bills are on their way. Everybody's probably looking forward to that. And then we did talk about, we did approve that the authorized distribution of first responder stipend program funds to all eligible employees and call firefighters on a monthly basis for the duration the grant will be given. So that is what we did.
That's good. Thank you. Joe? Leanne, do you have anything?
No, nothing new.
Sue?
Um, two quick things. Um, let me see. The conservation commission will be entertaining, we expect, a representative from the Mitchell Road application, and that will be June 8th. And hopefully, we can get Zoom up and running to make that go forward. And the second item is that the trails that are open to the public have gotten a lot of use by the public. And we've experienced a bit of vandalism on McKennard piece, on McKennard Road. So if you suspect or notice any vandalism, please contact the police department. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Steph, do you have any, anything to update?
No updates here.
Joanna?
The only update that I got today for the public is that to stay tuned that there's going to be possibly some opening of our town facility with some possible scheduling to come in. So stay tuned for those details on the website.
Great.
I think Rochester just opened up the registry and there's a line around the building all day long.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, even in the heat, it was wrapped around the building. Steph, I applaud this. I emailed, but it was just the other day, and you probably haven't dug out yet. Comcast have been odd for me for emails. I sent some comments to try to consolidate for the Mitchell Road subdivision to go with your review. So if you didn't get it, just send me an email and I'll send it back to you.
I think I did get them, but I'll double check and let you know.
Thank you.
So that point, is that, obviously, since I'm fairly new, is that how you guys like to do it, is try and send comments ahead of time from our end so that stuff includes, so that we're not, we try and get, they can get ahead of the comments?
Yeah, so that's something that's a little bit different than we have in the past. I mean, this is kind of the first larger subdivision that we've had recently. All the other ones have been just kind of a five lot. But I think it's a good way to maybe make things a little bit more efficient in the meetings. You know, if we can get them consolidated along with staff comments and any of the engineers' comments, if we can kind of get those consolidated, it helps out the applicant as well responding to those.
Okay, I'll send those directly to Steph as well.
Yeah, just CC me too and Joanna. And then I guess Joanna, the, I didn't get a reply back, but have the plans gone to CMA for engineering review?
They did today.
Okay, good. So they're out for consultant review to take a look at them.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? All right. Someone want a motion to adjourn?
Chairman, Ed Veal, I move that we adjourn.
All right, I don't know who seconded it, but I agree. I'll give it to Joe.
I'm having some Comcast issues as well, so I understand it.
Got it. All right. Thanks and be safe.
All right. Take care.
Yeah.
Good night.